I've tasted of the Lord and I know that Jesus, you are good. I've tasted of the Lord and I know that Jesus, you are good. Yes, I've tasted... I've tasted of the Lord and I know that Jesus, you are good. Yes, I've tasted of the Lord. I've tasted of the Lord and I know that Jesus, you are good. Yes, I know. I know, I know, I know. Yes, I know that Jesus, you are good. Yes, I know. I know, I know, I know. Yes, I know that Jesus, you are good. And I've tasted of the Lord. Yes, I know that Jesus, you are good. And I've tasted of the Lord and I know that Jesus, you are good. I know, I know, I know. Yes, I know that Jesus, you are good. I know, I know, I know. Yes, I know that Jesus, you are good. Yes, I've tasted... I've tasted of the Lord and I know that Jesus, you are good. I've tasted of the Lord and I know that Jesus, you are good. Yes, I know. I know, I know, I know. Yes, I know that Jesus, you are good. Yes, I know. I know, I know, I know. Yes, I know that Jesus, you are good. Ni me onja uyu yesusu ni na juwa ye ye ni mwema. Ni me onja uyu yesusu ni na juwa ye ye ni mwema. Ni me onja... Ni me onja uyu yesusu ni na juwa ye ye ni mwema. Ni me onja... Ni me onja uyu yesusu ni na juwa ye ye ni mwema. Ni mi na juwa... Na juwa... Na juwa... Na juwa... Ni na juwa ye ye ni mwema. Ni mi na juwa... Na juwa... Na juwa... Ni na juwa ye ye ni mwema. Seman ni me onja... Ni me onja uyu yesusu ni na juwa ye ye ni mwema. Ni 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 me onja... Ni me onja uyu yesusu ni na juwa ye ye ni mwema. Ni mi na juwa... Na juwa... Na juwa... Ni na juwa ye ye ni mwema. Ni ba na juwa... Na juwa... Na juwa... Ni na juwa ye ye ni mwema.
Good evening church and praise God. We are very happy and excited to be here once again this evening to study the Word of God and to bring to us the Word of God as the Lord will enable us. My name is Kola Mbuyi, I'm from GCI Thika Road and it is another exciting evening when we sit together in fellowship to share the Word of God. I will welcome the team that we are ministering with this evening to introduce themselves then we proceed.
Good evening church, Beatrice is here and I want to thank God for this opportunity that He has given me to study His Word. You are all welcome.
Amen. Good evening viewers. I'm really excited once again to be present for this Bible study today as we bring the Book of Acts to a close. My name is Pastor Peter Shikuku and in turn pastor here at GCI Central. I thank God for this opportunity. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening viewers. It's indeed with my pleasure that I join this team to bring the Word of God, specifically the Book of Acts. I'm a member of GCI Central. My name is Godfrey Seear. Thank you so much and welcome. God bless.
Good evening viewers. I am excited once again to be with you and to study the Book of Acts together with you. My name is Joyce Makasingi from GCI Central, Karibuni Sana.
Thank you. Thank you team, Karibuni Sana. May the Lord bless and minister to us as we bring His Word. So just to recap on what we've been studying in the last few Thursdays, we've been taking a journey through the Book of Acts and our main concentration has been on the church and the mandate that we have been given as the church. So we've been studying the church and her mandate and I am sure we've gained some insights from the interactions that we've had in the last few Thursdays. So today we are bringing this to a close and we are hoping that this will be a turnaround for us and even for the body of Christ on how we carry out ourselves and how committed and serious we are with advancing the mission of God. So today we are going to be tackling the last part of the Gentile mission. As we were beginning, we saw that the church started... the church or the Holy Spirit empowering started in Jerusalem and that is where the church was born. And after a few... after some period, the church got comfortable and were not willing to disperse and go out and minister the Word of God. But we see persecution came on the church and due to the persecution, the believers had to scatter out and as they scattered out, running away from the persecution, they had to take the gospel of Jesus Christ with them. And so we saw the gospel of Jesus Christ advancing into... from Jerusalem to Judea to Samaria. And finally, we've seen as we... we dwelt in the last Bible study in the first and the second missionary journeys of the Apostle Paul, we saw the gospel of Jesus Christ reaching to the uttermost parts of the world or to the Gentiles. So we've had the Jewish mission, we had the transitional mission and now we are winding up on the Gentile mission. The Gentiles here meaning the people who are not Jews, the non-Jews. And to start us off, we are going to read our key text that has been our key text, that is Acts chapter 1 verses 6 to 11. And I will ask Beatrice to read verse 6 to 8 and Shikuku will read 9 to 11. Then we are going to read Acts chapter 19, verse 1 to 10, where we'll have Pastor Joyce and Godfrey taking five verses each.
Amen. Acts chapter 1, verse 6 to 8. "Then they gathered around him and asked him, 'Lord, are you at this time going to restore the kingdom of Israel?' He said to them, 'It is not for you to know the times or deaths; the Father has said for his own authority; but you will receive power when the Holy Spirit comes on you and you will be my witnesses in Jerusalem, in all Judea and Samaria, and to the end of the earth.' Amen."
And then to continue with the reading, the same Book of Acts, chapter 1, 9 to 11, the Bible says, "And when he had said these things, as they were looking on, he was lifted up, and a cloud took him out of their sight; and while they were gazing into heaven as he went, behold, two men stood by them in white robes, and said, 'Men of Galilee, why do you stand looking into heaven? This Jesus, who was taken up from you into heaven, will come in the same way as you saw him go into heaven.'" Thank you.
Thank you Peter and the team. So as we had said in the beginning, when Jesus was leaving His disciples on His ascension, He left us with three things. One was a commission that go ye out and make disciples in the world. And also He left us a command that do not start this work until you receive the empowering of the Holy Spirit. And He left us the promise of the Holy Spirit who would come to help us, to strengthen us and just to be with us as we carried out the mission work. And we see Paul dramatically converted from a persecutor of brethren. And remember, we said it's not his name that changed, but he had a Jewish name and a Greek name, Saul and Paul. And so Paul was initially as persecutor of brethren and we see the Holy Spirit coming upon him in the Damascine outpouring and transforming his mind and even his life taking a total turn around such that wherever... instead of heading where he was heading to persecute brethren, he immediately started even advancing the work of God and sharing the gospel of the good news with the world. So today we concentrate on the effecian outpouring and I will welcome the team.
Thank you scholar. I think maybe for the sake of the listeners, for us to bring them to the place where we are, we can read the Book of Acts 19, where scholar had asked us to read from verse number one to verse number 10. So I will read the first five verses and Godfrey will read the remaining verses. "And it happened that while Apollos was at Corinth, Paul passed through the inland country and came to Ephesus. There he found some disciples, and he said to them, 'Did you receive the Holy Spirit when you believed?' And they said, 'No, we have not even heard that there is a Holy Spirit.' And he said, 'Into what then were you baptized?' They said, 'Into John's baptism.' And Paul said, 'John baptized with the baptism of repentance, telling the people to believe in the one who was... who was to come after him, that is Jesus. On hearing this, they were baptized in the name of the Lord Jesus.'"
"And when Paul had laid his hands on them, the Holy Spirit came unto them, and they began speaking in tongues and prophesying. There were about twelve men in all; and he entered the synagogue, and for three months spoke boldly, reasoning and persuading them about the kingdom of God. But when some became stubborn and continued in unbelief, speaking evil of their way before the congregation, he withdrew from them and took the disciples with him, reasoning daily in the hall of Tyranos. This continued for two years, so that all the residents of Asia had the word of the Lord, both Jews and Greeks."
Amen. Thank you. Thank you for that Pastor Joyce. Since I went ahead of myself and thought we had read the whole scripture. Yeah, so in Paul's third missionary journey, again we see him coming from Antioch, which we have been saying, we said in the previous sessions that Antioch was the sending church and they were like Paul's covering. So anytime he was proceeding on a mission, it came from Antioch to whatever destinations he was going. And at the end of the missionary journey, he always went back to his sending church to give them reports of how the church was doing out there, how the believers were getting strengthened, how their disciples were being made and just to give a report on what he was doing as a missionary. So from Antioch, we see Paul advancing to Phrygia and Galatia and there he had specifically gone to strengthen the disciples, which is a pastoral ministry. And we see him sitting with the believers just to encourage them and to ensure they are keeping strong in the faith. They've not stagnated just where he left them, but they are growing and even advancing the work of God at their own level. And also we see Paul again going to Ephesus as part of his third missionary journey. And in Ephesus is where we see the effecian outpouring, where again we remember we said that there were seven major outpourings in the Book of Acts and this becomes the last outpouring in the Book of Acts. And I will welcome the team to discuss around the effecian outpouring and how this happened and what happens to the church after this outpouring.
Okay scholar, if you allow me. When we are talking about the outpouring, the seven outpourings in the Book of Acts, we are not talking about outpouring of anything else. We are talking about the outpouring of the Holy Spirit. That is the key thing that we are talking about. So just like she said, Paul goes strengthening the people in Phrygia and Galatia and all that. And this is just to confirm that Paul had a pastoral heart or pastoral ministry and which I think every believer should have. You don't have to be called to be a pastor for you to have this call because it's a matter of going back to where you had ministered and people came to the Lord Jesus Christ and strengthening them and encouraging them to continue with the faith. Because I think we are witnesses that the journey of salvation is not easy. It's very difficult and sometimes you can face persecution and you want to go back to your familiar ground. And one of the things that I learned about discipleship is that when somebody comes to your home and you don't show them around, they get uncomfortable and they want to go back home, to the home that they are familiar with. So even as we bring people to the kingdom of God, of course, we know it's not us, but the Holy Spirit and Jesus Christ Himself. But when we are used for that particular mission, we should disciple people, going back, strengthening them, finding out what their challenges are, what their joys are, warming their life. If we don't do that, they will go back home and their home is the sin that they have been practicing in the past. Thank you.
Amen. Amen. I also want to add that first I just thank God that there was a lot of outpouring of the Holy Spirit of God wherever these men of God went and with the work that they did. In this particular portion, we look at... we see that while they were at Galatia and Phrygia, a man from Alexandria, that is in Egypt, came to Ephesus. He was well educated and had thorough knowledge of the Old Testament and spoke about Jesus adequately. He was called Apollos. And in our previous teaching, Pastor Joyce talked about it. Talked about this particular man called Apollos, who was taken by Priscilla and Aquila when they had him. They took him aside and taught him about the ways of God thoroughly. First, we have seen this man was educated. So that tells me that the salvation is for everyone. We have repeatedly said this one. And in our previous teaching, Sister Scholar talked about Luke. I think it must have been Beatrice talking about Luke, a writer. But even in his capacity, he still worked with the work of God. So I'm looking at how Priscilla and Aquila were so concerned and we need such kind of concerned people in the house of God. When you hear or you see a brethren maybe struggling to understand the Word of God, they have some concerns in the matters of faith. Don't just look at them and leave them or laugh at them or even bite about them, but talk... take them, put them aside, share with them the Word of God, let them understand into thoroughly the Word of God, just like Priscilla and Aquila's did. Thank you.
Thank you Peter. Beatrice, you look like you want to say something.
Yeah, I am just looking at this point where Paul went to Ephesus and he found some disciples and asked them whether they had received the Holy Spirit. And they confessed they had never even heard about the Holy Spirit. So it is possible that... and they said they were baptized by the baptism of John. So it seems like after they were baptized in water by John, they became comfortable and they had some ignorance about whether there was any other step they would move. But as we have seen, without the power of the Holy Spirit, they were not complete. And we see that Paul went ahead and prayed for the Holy Spirit and they were baptized in the same.
Okay, let me just make a comment because of what Peter said. The man from Alexandria in Egypt. I want to remind our viewers and even ourselves here that Alexandria was one of the places that had the biggest Bible school. Actually, at the time, it was the only place that had a Bible school. And it was a centre for learning in Egypt. And the biggest library had been there for a very long time. And that's why you find Apollos was very educated, coming from a centre for learning. But I want to say that you can be in a centre for learning, but if you do not have the Holy Spirit, you just remain with head knowledge and you do not have the spiritual power that drives the mission of God. So let's not only bank on education and forget that we need the outpouring which translates into empowering for the mission of God.
Yeah, so that is very clear that yes, we need the education. Like Peter was saying, Luke was a doctor. The person who wrote the Book of Acts was a medical doctor. And still, he had laid that aside just to advance the work of God. So we should not let our professions or our knowledge that we have, our worldly knowledge, deter us from spreading the word of God. We need educated people in the kingdom. We need people of substance. We need great people even in the corporate world. So that as you're working in the corporate world, you're also advancing the work of God. But the only catch here is that as much knowledge as you may have in your head, without the Holy Spirit, it is nothing. So let us also learn to depend on the empowering of the Holy Spirit and on the grace that comes with it to advance the work of God. So we see, as Sister Beatrice was saying, Paul getting to Ephesus and these people have no idea what the Holy Spirit is. And clearly, this was not... this was a church that was not missional in nature. And so Paul had to come in and teach them who the Holy Spirit is and why do we need this Holy Spirit as a church or as believers? And we see now that is where the effecian outpouring comes because the Holy Spirit is released upon the church in Ephesus. So that again, as we keep saying, the river can continue flowing. The mission of God has to keep advancing. And any obstacles that may come along the way, the Holy Spirit and God in His nature deals with it. He will send Paul to go and teach them about the Holy Spirit. He will raise somebody to just deal with whatever is there at that time. And so we see the last outpouring in the effecian church. And after that, we see Paul... Godfrey, you want to say something?
I'm just pondering over this outpouring, even as we see the effecian outpouring as the seventh outpouring. And looking at Apollos and the background which pastor has just painted from Alexandria, a place of where people have great knowledge, there is a high learning and Apollos himself is highly educated. So the question that comes to me is, it is not just about the head knowledge about the Word of God or reading the Word of God as a textbook, but we need the power of the Holy Spirit to be able to do the work of God and to live a fruitful Christian life. So it is not just enough having that head knowledge about the Word, but the power behind that God has given us willingly as we read in Acts 1:8.
Okay. Thank you very much, Godfrey. So after the effecian outpouring, we see Paul advancing on his third missionary journeys and meeting churches in Jerusalem, in Rome, in Greece and just empowering them and strengthening them. Remember, we said it was not only about making converts, it was about raising believers who are disciples. And by disciples, it means people who have been made and formed and just their mind has been shifted to be Christ-like and ready to advance the work of God. And so we see the Holy Spirit as the superintendent of the harvest. By the superintendent means like He's the boss of the harvest. He's the one who decides who will go where, who will do what and which people will be ministered to at what point. And so the Holy Spirit is the main superintendent of the harvest. And Peter, you look like you want to say something.
Yes, the journey is so sweet and we are enjoying it. Before we move on to the superintendent power of the Holy Spirit, back here, I'm seeing a point where we have, other than the twelve disciples or apostles, we have men and women. And I want to stress here, men and women, who are also dedicated to faithfully proclaim the message of Christ in many parts of the ancient world. So the work of God was not limited to the twelve apostles of Jesus, but now as a result of the outpouring of the Holy Spirit of God, many people got the privilege and the opportunity to continue doing God's work. And that is how now the many Gentiles were receiving the message of God. So this is also an encouragement when men and women take their positions in the kingdom of God, in the vineyard of God, to do God's work. So when you are there, you are a woman of God, you are a man of God and there is this particular calling upon yourself. Don't sit on that particular calling. Come out so that we continue taking the Word of God to many nations as God will lead us. Thank you.
Amen. Amen. Seems there is nothing, no one else with a point. So we see the Holy Spirit as also coming in as a missionary strategist. Because when we look at Paul, maybe in the missionary journeys that he took, there must have been something or somebody guiding him. Now take this route, the other time you took in the first missionary journey, you took this route. Now kindly take this other route. And so we should be given to the leading of the Holy Spirit even as missionaries. At times, maybe we keep wondering, why does the church now tell us this time we are going to minister for a mission in the coastal region, the other time we take to the western region? And these are men and women of God who have given themselves to the guiding of the Holy Spirit. So the Holy Spirit is at the back, strategizing and planning the work of God and then also working to equip the missionaries who are going out to their mission fields and sending them and even directing their paths. As Pastor Joyce was saying, in the mission field, it's always very tough out there. You meet all sorts of demons and powers and diseases and there's so much to deal with out there. And without the empowering of the Holy Spirit, there is seriously nothing anybody can do as a person. So the Holy Spirit directs, encourages us, encourages us even during missions. At times, people have to walk for long, long distances in very not friendly environments and under a lot of... in very not-friendly environments and under a lot of heat or even in the cold. But with the help of the Holy Spirit, we're able to persevere all that, and any other challenge that comes, just for us to continue and keep moving and ministering the word of God.
Yeah. I just love how this point has come out. It is answering maybe a question that one or two or many members could be having. When we have RCPAs, Rapid Church Planting Strategy. So we have seen that the work of the Holy Spirit as superintendent of the harvest is that strategy. That one is very clear. And I also love the part of equip. You know, those points, there are six, and we need just to let members know that. The Holy Spirit helps us to strategize, and that is why we have this strategy. And right now, this year, we began on something about sheepfold. The Holy Spirit was still helping the church at GCI to strategize on how we can continue empowering the mission of God outside there, so that many people in all our counties may receive the word of God. We are well-equipped, we have been sent, we are directed, we are well-encouraged, and the same Holy Spirit of God will sustain the mission of God outside there.
Amen.
Amen. I'm just thinking to myself, what if Jesus gave the mandate and the command and just left us to go and carry it out like that? It's very likely that people will put in their ideas. People will not even, they will use their strength and their personal empowerment to carry out the mission. And it is likely that they will never get anywhere. They will never accomplish whatever God wanted them to accomplish. But you know, He released the Spirit of God to be our companion. I love what you people are saying, that He's the strategist. As much as we have the strategy, it is the Holy Spirit who is the strategist. And I think He should go ahead of us. We are following the Holy Spirit. He's not the one that is behind us and following us to the mission field. So when we know that we are doing what we are doing because the Holy Spirit is helping us, and then when we know that before we go to another direction, before we take another missionary journey, we need to be in consultation with the Spirit, then that keeps us very humble. Because we know, I can't come up with an idea that next month I am going to Meru to go and evangelize there. I must hear from the Spirit of God. Look at the case that happened in Macedonia. I know we didn't probably mention it. But Paul wants to go to another place, and there's a cry, or there's a man from Macedonia calling him and telling him, come to this place, we need you here. And of course, after much struggle, he decides to follow that. Because the Holy Spirit is directing that you shouldn't go to Meru, you need to go to Mombasa or another place. So we must keep in touch with the Spirit and follow Him. Don't allow Him to follow you, follow Him, because He's the strategist.
I like that. Do not lead the Holy Spirit.
Yeah.
He's the one who should be leading us. Amen. So as we bring a close to the Book of Acts, and there's a question that I would want to ask ourselves. What was the intention of Paul when he wrote the Book of Acts? What did he want us to know? What did he want to communicate to the church then?
I think you should make it Dr. Luke, not Paul.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I meant Dr. Luke. When Luke writes the Book of Acts, what was his intention? What did he want us to learn? What did he want us to, what was he communicating to the church then and to us now as believers in the church of God today? And maybe I will welcome the team to just discuss. The Book of Acts has so much of what the apostles did then. And as we were saying, it does not end. So what are we doing this day as believers?
Okay, let me answer that. Luke's primary intent in writing the Book of Acts is to return the church back to her Pentecostal mandate and missionary roots. This was written to the people of that time. And I think it's a very important thing even for the church of today, the contemporary church, that we need to go back to our Pentecostal and missionary roots if we are going to properly carry out the mandate of our Lord Jesus Christ to the world. And even as we talk about that, if, okay, if we say that we are going back to our Pentecostal roots, remember Pentecostalism is not shouting. Remember, it is not about shaking and crying and those kind of things. It is about the outpouring of the Holy Spirit upon our lives and doing things the way the Spirit would have wanted us to do. And let me tell you, when you try to copy the Pentecostal movement without first of all being impacted and being filled with the Holy Spirit, you will experience something that the sons of Sceva experienced. They thought it was just obvious to rise up, shake a little bit, and say in the name of, in the name for our sake here, in the name of Jesus Christ, whom Bishop Charles preaches. Believe you me, you will be beaten like you have never seen. So it is important for us to know that God for ourselves. Thank God that our bishop knows Him. But I also want to know Him personally, so that I preach in the name of Jesus Christ and being filled by the Holy Spirit to go out there and do that work.
Amen. Thank you for that, Pastor Joyce. And as we can see, maybe you're out there, I mean, you're out there and you're asking yourself, how can I go back to this missionary route? How can I go back to this Pentecostal route? Or what can I do as a GCI member out here to make sure that I'm advancing the work of God and to make sure that the river of the gospel is still flowing? The church, and that is our church, GCI Church. I know there are many churches out there, and they've also adopted different strategies for reaching out and for spreading the mission work and the gospel of God. In GCI, we have something we call the Rapid Church Planting Strategy. And it is a forum that we thank our leadership, we thank our DGO and even the whole board, that they sat down and thought, these people have been in Jerusalem for too long. These people have dwelt here, and we need to advance, we need to break camp and go to Samaria and go to Judea and go to the uttermost parts of the world. And what began a few years ago now in our churches, we can see the fruits of it. We have grown from one church to, I think, around twenty eighteen now, to around eighteen branches now out there in the counties, in Kisumu, in Mombasa, in Meru, all over the counties. And we are hoping that by the year 2030, we'll have been, we'll have presence in all the counties. So as a believer and as a member of GCI, you have a place to partake in this. You can support your county, that is where you come from. And also you can adopt any other county that you feel you could support, even for mission work. As Brother Peter was saying, right now, the church is in the process of doing the sheepfold. The sheepfold is just a church structure for the county churches, somewhere where believers can sit and feed from the word of God, especially in the areas where the people out there are not so much able to raise funds and do this for themselves. So you can, you have a chance to come in and support the work of God in that area. And even as we advance this, we have things that we can borrow from the life of Paul and from his missionary strategies. The pillars that he used, what were the pillars that Paul used even to advance the work of God? Because we can also be able to borrow from the same and apply the same even in our church as we go out and open churches and even minister in the county churches and beyond.
Amen.
We are not stopping at the counties, amen. We are going beyond the boundaries.
Sure.
Amen. So what are the pillars in Paul's missionary strategy that we could borrow from?
Let me talk about pillar number one.
Peter is burning.
Pillar number one is about empowering. And if you go back to our main text, we have been referring to the Book of Acts, chapter one, from verse six all the way to verse eleven. But there is this particular verse, verse eight, that we have kept on reading. Empowerment came from there. And this is a strong pillar that Paul used in planting churches. So when we plant churches, we should make sure that the churches are empowered. People in these churches are preached to the word of God. They are empowered, and they are spoken to about the empowerment and the leading of the Holy Spirit. It should be our desire that every time we have missions, like I remember in a GCI calendar, we have missions twice in a year. We have not many to have one in 2020, but I know more are coming in the other years to come. Each and every time we shall move to these counties, we should desire the empowerment and the outpouring of the Holy Spirit. So that is pillar number one. And in this empowerment, we are looking at, people are empowered in the Spirit and also baptized in the Holy Spirit.
Amen. Amen.
Well, at that, Peter, this empowering that we are talking about, it's both for personal empowerment. Remember, Paul never took up a missionary journey before he could get empowered. So for the missionary first, there is that empowering. And even as they go out there and minister, then there is the empowering of the church. We studied that when he went to Ephesus, I guess, he went and asked them, have you received the Holy Spirit since you believed? That means that Paul had already been empowered with the Holy Spirit. And he wants to find out if the church in Ephesus also was empowered by the same Spirit. So on trying to find that out, he realizes that these people even, don't even have the Jesus baptism, they have John's baptism. And then he educates them to empower them. So the empowering is for both the missionary and for the church itself.
Amen. Yes, and just to add that, when this empowering comes on us, it gives us courage, it gives us boldness, and it helps us even to advance the work of God amidst opposition. Thank you very much. So that is pillar number one. Maybe can, anybody else can go on? What other pillar do you get, or did Paul use and can we borrow from him today?
Thank you. I want to talk about the pillar of training for missionaries and church planters. Where we see from the scripture we wrote in Tyrrhannus Hall, Paul mobilizing the church for international missions. I am happy that even within GCI, there is emphasis for training. And the church over and above training for missionaries and church planters gives a very wide concept of, okay, training of believers to be equipped to properly handle the work of God, maybe in areas of leadership and all areas, maybe families and all aspects of Christian life.
Yes, thank you. I know, just before we get to you, Peter, Godfrey is actually a ministry leader in the Training Department. And we know they are doing a good job in training the missionaries before releasing them for mission. We've also seen them training even the church leaders. And we have a leadership training where you go through the first tier, you go through the second, the third, and being empowered and being raised as a proper leader in the church of God, which is very important.
We've always asked, are leaders born or are leaders made? I believe leaders are born, but leaders can also be made through training.
Yeah.
Through training. So that when we attend the curriculum that is met with the church, we are able to be better equipped to understand various aspects as Christians, so that we don't struggle. We enjoy, because Christianity for us is a lifestyle.
I am very excited with this particular point of training. And I just thank God that we have our brother Godfrey, and he has really spoken about it. Leaders are born, and at the same time, leaders are made. So I also want to emphasize that if we truly want to continue with the Book of Acts and do the work that God has called us to do, for the church of God to understand her mandate and to continue with her mission on work, training is a key aspect that we really need to understand and we really need to take up. So I'm very happy that we, as a ministry, we have embraced it and I continue to challenge many people, as many as we can. Let's get the opportunity. Let's get into the programs that are training us for the mission on work. Because that one will prepare us to be great men and women of God who shall continue with the work that Christ left for us.
Amen.
And Pastor, if you allow me, probably still on that point, there is also another training that the church has brought in in collaboration with Pan-African Christian University. It is a very well-tailored course that you go through, and it leaves a real big difference in you. So I encourage the listeners, if you have not gone through that course, I pray that God gives you the opportunity to go through that course.
Thank you. Actually, we are all beneficiaries of that.
Products.
We are all products.
Yes.
Yeah, the team that has been coming to you with the Bible study, we are a team coming from the PAC course or the PAC program that has been collaborated with Gospel Centers International. And we have learned for sure, we've been empowered. And I think we are not what we were before we took that. And thanks to our leader and our Vice Chancellor, Pastor Joyce. Yeah, so we can go to pillar number three quickly as we put a close to this.
Yeah. Pillar number three is proclamation of the gospel with signs. This involves preaching the gospel and also demonstrating. For example, if you are preaching the word of God and you are saying, Jesus heals, there should be some demonstration of the same. And we cannot do that if we don't have the power of the Holy Spirit. We can only do that, demonstrate that, when we have the power of the Holy Spirit. And after we have received the power of the Holy Spirit and we are able to proclaim the word and also demonstrate, we should take all the glory to God. We should not take it to be as our own. Because we have seen, even when Paul was doing those miracles and the rest of the missionaries, they were not taking that same to themselves, but it was for the glory and honor of God.
Amen. We also remember the apostles making a prayer at the beginning chapters in the Book of Acts and praying to God that He will give them the power to witness boldly and also that whatever they witness will be accompanied by signs and wonders, which is also a very key pillar in the work of missions, where what we preach, God should be able to follow it with signs and wonders if we allow Him to work in us. So I think we have brought a close to the Book of Acts. I am sure we have enjoyed. Be on the lookout for what is coming next. It will be exciting, and we are going to learn. So I'm going to give the panelists just a few seconds to say, what do you want to leave the church with? We start with Pastor Joyce.
Shikuku, why are you insisting that scholar should start with me? But anyway, thank you for the opportunity. As my conclusion, I want to read chapter nineteen, verse nine and ten. "But when some became stubborn and continued in unbelief, speaking evil of the way before the congregation, he withdrew, that is Paul, from them and took the disciples with him, reasoning daily in the hall of Tyrrhannus. This continued for two years, so that all the residents of Asia had the word of the Lord, both Jews and Greek." Some of the manuscripts say that Paul taught these people, the training that our brother Godfrey was talking about, that was from the fifth hour to the tenth hour. And for our understanding, that is from eleven AM to around four in the evening. Those are five hours. And Paul continued daily to teach people for five hours. And Paul continued daily to teach people for five hours for the next two years. I think that was very, very important. And that was a great commitment on the side of Paul. So even for us who have been called by Jesus, let's spare some time. And actually not even sparing time, it is sacrificing time. Creating time to teach people about the Kingdom of God and actually even more time training the disciples that we have found. God bless you.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, viewers. As we come to the conclusion of the Book of Acts, I want to emphasize the empowering presence of the Spirit of God comes from powerful spiritual experience that is baptism of the Holy Spirit, whose purpose is to empower or give power to us believers for effective witness. Thank you.
Amen. It has been five good weeks of, of a journey through the Book of Acts. And I want to thank God that we, if, we have really learnt a lot. We might not have exhausted everything, but we have presented whatever God gave to us to speak to the church. And some six lessons that I've learnt that I need to share with all of us so that as you continue reading the Book of Acts, God will speak to you through. Number one, I have learnt about the unity in the church. We've been talking about the church and our mandate and we've realized that the church of God will carry out the mission successfully when the church is united. Number two is the obedience to the leading of the Holy Spirit. That is also a lesson that I've learnt, that we need to be obedient to the leading of the Holy Spirit. Let's not just do things for the sake of doing them. Let's follow the leading of the Holy Spirit. Number three, I have learnt about intense prayers as a lifestyle. All these apostles of God, they dedicated themselves, they prayed to God. And through the many prayers that they did, they were successful in the mission that they were doing. Number four is about committing to the missional work of God. The church has a missional work and let's be partakers of this particular call that God has given to us. Then number five is about discipling the converts and helping them to understand the scriptures. Let's make sure that it is our primary duty to disciple the converts and help them to stand in the salvation and also to understand the scriptures. And lastly, persecutions and suffering in the ministry should encourage us to continue doing God's work. If you really read, you know, we've reached, we've read up to chapter nineteen, but I will encourage you to continue reading up to verse, chapter twenty-eight and I believe God will help you. As I leave you, I will leave you with Acts, chapter twenty-seven, verse twenty-two that says, yet now I urge you to take heart, for there will be no loss of life among you, but only of the sheep. For this very night, they stood before me, an angel of the God to whom I belong and whom I worship. It is a very encouraging verse. May God bless you.
Amen.
Amen. I have learnt that it is mandatory for each believer to receive or to pray that God may give us, or rather clothe us with the power of the Holy Spirit. Because we know that he is our, our equiper, he is our teacher. So that we may not perish because of lack of knowledge of what God intends or expects us to do. With the power of the Holy Spirit, we are able to do exploits. And we know that when, when we have the power of the Holy Spirit, we will touch many lives and including even our own lives. Our, the way of, the way we behave will change and it will be for the better for the, for the building of the Kingdom of God. I read somewhere, when we were studying, some, somewhere in one of the books, we were told that this book would even have been named as the Acts of the Holy Spirit. Because we see that everything that has happened throughout the book is because of the power of the Holy Spirit. Be blessed.
Amen.
Amen. And just to challenge us that the Book of Acts continues to be written. It might not come in the form of a Bible, but there are books in heaven. Our, our G O keeps reminding us that there are books where, where the Acts of Man are recorded. So make sure that you'll appear in those books when they are presented on the final day of Christ. God bless you so much. It has been a pleasure taking this journey with you. And I will welcome our leader and pastor, Pastor Joyce, to close this for us with a word of prayer. And hope to see you next Thursday when we'll be starting over another topic and another discussion. And before that, we have Saturday prayers, I mean, Saturday Battle Acts Fellowship from three P M. And on Sunday, we have three services starting from seven thirty, nine thirty and eleven thirty. And our Sunday School starting at nine, running at nine A M. And also in the afternoon, we have the, the youth church and the youth fellowship at two P M. And in the evening, we have the family fellowship at eight P M. Before that, also, I mean, after that, we also have our Tuesday prayers with Elder Alan on every Tuesday from seven fifteen to eight fifteen. Have a blessed week and may the Lord minister and keep ministering to our hearts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much scholar, but it is the other way around. Battle Acts is from two and Youth and Teens is from three P M. Yeah, so if you're there and you're not born again, you don't even know what we are talking about. Maybe you don't even know Jesus baptism, you know John's baptism. You can say, Lord Jesus, I believe that you are the Savior of the world. I pray that you change my life and write my name in the book of life. If you have prayed that prayer, please send us a comment. The number of our church, the, the, the office number is running through your screens. Please get in touch with us and we are going to communicate with, with you more. Let's pray together. Father, we thank you and we worship your name this wonderful evening. Thank you for this journey that you started with us. And Father, you, we have come to a good place. We, as we continue reading the rest of the chapters in the Book of Acts, I pray that you reveal yourself to us. I pray for the listeners, that Lord you will bless them. And further, that you will extend their territories, even in terms of missions, in, in terms of church planting, in terms of Pentecostalism, in the mighty name of Jesus. So Lord, we thank you and we worship you. We pray this through Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior.
Amen.
Shalom.
Shalom, shalom.
Hello, viewers. Thank you so much for tuning in today. It's our prayer that you have been nourished and edified. Remember, this service is not complete without giving. To do so, use Empresso Payable number eight four four six three two. Account number, offering, or type, or sheepfold redemption, or any other. You can also use our Equity Bank account number, one zero eight zero two nine six eight four nine five three eight. Account name, Nairobi Gospel Center International. In need of prayers, counseling or inquiries? Reach out to us on zero seven two five two five five nine four one. Or zero seven three four six six two five seven seven. May our good Lord richly bless you and keep you. May he cause his face to shine upon you now and forevermore.